A little while, and I'll look forward to when we can get back to normal once this pandemic is behind us. But so it'll despair with me as we move through this meeting, there may be a few glitches as things are a little bit different. I don't have the speakers list on the computer anymore, so I'll be keeping a manual list. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt and receive the agenda items. Counselor Davis, and secondar, Counselor Kunst, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Need a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular afternoon council meeting of March 23rd and the regular evening council meeting of March 23rd and the public hearing of March 23rd. Counselor Long, Counselor Whitmarsh seconds. Any errors or missions? All those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you. We now move on to bylaws for final adoption, and these are our financial bylaws mostly. C1 is amendment to the council, oh, actually, this is the council procedure bylaw first. Amendment to the council procedure bylaw for electronic meetings, it's bylaw number 5592, could I have a motion, please? Counselor Ferguson moves, Counselor Whitmarsh seconds, any discussion? Show of hands, Counselor Davis, no, okay, Counselor Kunst, discussion, no, okay, all those in favor? Opposed, carries unanimously, thank you. Now we move on to the financial motions. C2 is the Langley 2020, 2024 five-year financial plan bylaw and development cost charge reserve fund expenditure bylaw, bylaw number 5565 and 5564, could I have a motion, please? Counselor Arnison moves it, secondar, Counselor Whitmarsh, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, carries unanimously. C3 is user pay utility rate bylaws for 2020, bylaw 5566 and 5567, could I have a motion, please? Counselor Kunst, second by Counselor Davis, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, and that carries, thank you. C4 is aligning fees and charges bylaw amendment, bylaw number 5593, could I have a motion, please? Counselor Whitmarsh, secondar, Counselor Ferguson, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, Counselor Richter opposed, the motion carries, thank you. C5, temporary borrowing bylaws, McLeod Athletic Park Capital Works land acquisition, strategic land acquisition and municipal security issuing resolution, bylaw 5594, 5595 and 5596, could I have a motion, please? Counselor Whitmarsh, secondar, Counselor Ferguson, discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, Counselor Richter is opposed, the motion carries. Items from prior meetings, I request a reconsideration of the following item from March 23rd, and this is D1, resigning application number 100484, development permit application number 100900, bylaw 5504 and 5511. So that's already been moved, correct, Madam Clerk? It's on the table.
No, it has, it's reconsidered.
It's been reconsidered, so it's?
No, it's just live again.
It's live again, that's right, okay. Any discussion? Oh, we do, I thought it was, okay. Okay, moved by Counselor Long, second, by Counselor Whitmarsh, Counselor Ferguson?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that there was information, we had an amendment regarding landscaping on the front portion, there, it's on 200th Street, if I may, through the chair?
Yeah, so the motion would be, we've moved it as amended, is that correct? Yeah, no, so we have to do the amendment again, okay, so Counselor Ferguson, you did have an amendment? Do you wish to move that amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so the amendment's been moved.
Also moved, it was either in the transcript, there's regarding landscaping and Hanson Landscation on 200th Street.
As was discussed on Monday. Secondar to the amendment, Counselor Woodward seconds it. Discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, care, okay, so opposed? Amendment carries unanimously. Now the motion as amended, any further discussion? Counselor Woodward? Oh, I can get your mic on, just give me a second. Okay, there we go.
Just a question through the staff, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just how many more of these are coming in regards to the the group of developers that are allowed to proceed prior to the neighbourhood planning process being completed? How many more of these do we have?
Applications in the system, Mr. Seffy?
Your worship, I think there's a few remaining.
Yeah, okay.
So this is one of, maybe two or three at most?
That's correct, yeah.
That that fall within that provision to proceed prior to?
They were, they were part of the the applications that council authorized as grandfathered, based on the date that the applications were received.
Okay, so this is not the last one?
I don't believe so, there's, I would suggest there's a few more remaining.
Okay.
Not many.
Thank you, any other questions, discussion, Counselor Richter? Let me get your mic on, Counselor Richter, oh, you don't have the power anymore, I, there we go.
I still have the power. Just wondering, is this application going to be paying CACs like the other ones?
I believe it is, but it's been negotiated, Mr. Seffy can explain, I know it's, I don't know if the term is CAC, but there's a negotiated.
That's great, your worship, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there is, yeah, thank you. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, Counselor Arnison, Counselor Davis, Counselor Woodward, Counselor Richter opposed, the motion carries, thank you. Takes us down to other business, and there's a discussion regarding public hearings for during this time. Certainly, the Minister, Minister Farworth made an order yesterday allowing meetings to be held electronically. Also, part of the order was that we, councils can prohibit people from coming to the meeting and still consider it a public meeting, I guess because we have the technology to watch live streams. So municipalities have that authority if they want to exercise that, it's still a public meeting. However, I was on a count, a conference call with Minister Farworth and Minister Robinson, Minister Farworth is Solicitor General, Attorney General, Solicitor General, and Minister Robinson, Minister of Housing and Committee, where they discussed these these orders. Question was asked about public hearings, and they're still working their way way through to get something for all of BC. However, I think Mr. Bakken has a solution that that is workable under this new thing. And one one thing we don't want to do is, I think municipalities across BC want to keep business moving as much as we possibly can. We don't want our economy to falter, and I think as a council, we have a role to play. However, because of the because of the rules of less than 50 and because of the limited distancing and that sort of thing, as long as we follow those rules, we can proceed. But it's not quite as easy and fluid as it was in the past. Mr. Bakken, if you could provide some background on some of the discussions you've had and how we could possibly proceed with public hearings.
So thank you, your worship, I guess, just to preface it, the comments I'm making are really both procedural and legal realities, and there's some practical considerations. But we do have a way to proceed with ordinary business, and just by way of background, you're quite right, the ministry has made a lot of changes that clearly impact regular meetings or special meetings of council. There is some uncertainty, though, in the legal community about the impact on public hearings. And as such, until there's further clarification, there's been some suggestions that, well, some requirements of public hearings continue in the same format, and I'll elaborate. The same format requires that there be, if you will, a a hearing or a place that someone can come to present their arguments and make their submissions. We can request that they be done electronically, we can be request that they be done on paper form, but we still ought to provide that forum for them to actually make their submissions. All the limitations about size and location remain in effect, but at this point, our best estimate is there's a necessity to have that forum to make the submissions. When we overlay that with our council procedural bylaw that's been adopted in the recent ministry, I guess rulings, it becomes clear that the ministry, that the council members can certainly participate electronically, meaning that they do not need to be at the forum that is opened, they simply need to be able to hear it. So if you can imagine, then, it is possible for us to have a public hearing whereby there is a couple of corporate officers, the clerk and myself, and one member of council, likely the mayor, and the rest of council could be doing these electronically, hearing from the public and then asking or making any inquiries they may have with the submissions. Our suggestion is we we try down that path, using the best restraint we can to try to pick out the ordinary or routine matters, and if there's something that is truly highly controversial, and that's always a judgment call, and we always struggle with that, then we would try to postpone or defer those. For example, in the system now, we have the six from the last meeting, but we also have a few more out there for more mundane uses such as cemeteries or institutional uses that may exist. We're not looking at this as an opportunity to advance too many controversial development applications. So as such, then, if that background's acceptable, our question really is in the in the guise of when should we meet next? We think April the 6th is a bit too, is premature at this point because there's many things that can happen, and as well, that's too early for there to be any public hearing component. But it's also probably too early for staff to have very many additional reports ready. We're targeting April the 20th as being our, I guess, our next virtual meeting or virtual meeting with public hearing tagged on, and we wanted to confirm with council that that's in order, such that we can can advance. We've also distributed in the package other information that confirms that this process is valid and is defendable to us. And there is also the encouragement from the ministry to continue with business as usual as much as we can. So that would require, then, in public hearings, advertising, and again, the forum to speak with some discretion in terms of the nature of the applications that might be a very, I guess, controversial. So that's our suggestion, your worship, and without any further advice, we would likely be targeting April the 20th.
Thank you, so one thing to clarify, so if there's a public hearing and there's, I'll just get this, and there's several items on the public hearing, we can still run the public hearing, but council procedures still apply, so if a member of council wants to move that that public hearing be put off or adjourned, that would be up to the body to decide, and that motion could still come forward on on particular public hearings that are in, you know, if there's seven of them or eight of them or one we think might be controversial and is still on the agenda, council can still have that moved to another time slot, is that correct? So it doesn't restrict council from saying, well, you know, what, this one, maybe we should take more time? But I agree with you, there are many that, and we will have an opportunity for, make sure there's an opportunity for the public to present, but these are uncharted territories and not contemplated by the community charter, and yet we do have the desire to keep business moving. So I have a speaker's list, so I'm gonna start with Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you, just a question to staff through your worship. I was wondering if if the council is sitting and watching the presentation being made by the various members of the public and watching that electronically, what mechanism will the council have to continue to ask questions of clarification and those kinds of things as we have in the past?
Well, I think I can answer that. So with the, we're using, we're gonna be using Zoom, and with, and I have had the opportunity to be in a couple of meetings with Metro Vancouver utilizing Zoom. So in that program, you'll be remote, you can still push the button that says, you know, raise my hand, and then you're recognized by the chair. Probably the clerk and I will be working together on that, because it's new, we haven't quite worked that out yet, but you'll be recognized to speak, and then you can speak and ask your questions as you would normally. So there is a mechanism to raise your hand, be recognized, ask your question in a public hearing like you would if you're sitting here, so.
So so would you, though, ask your question, that would be then a staff member who is here, present in front of that person would hear you and then relay that?
Actually, actually, that person, if they're here, they'll hear you.
They'll see it on, they'll see you on the screen, or how does that work?
Yeah, you'll be on the screen, and it's, when you speak, it's broadcast, as if you're sitting here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Long? Let me get you on, just, it takes me a minute to figure out where everybody is.
So I was just looking for the similar clarification, so we're going to have to have some, there has to be a council member, probably yourself, or somebody has to be here to run the meeting. And then the delegate would be ushered through somehow and able to stand here, so we'll have to have strict protocol as to how many people can come and go. But unlike the past, I imagine this is not being broadcast to everybody, it's only gonna go through the Zoom thing, right?
Through two members of council, so at this point, that's.
Because we haven't been televising public hearings up until now, so that will remain, and I guess the camera will see, pick them up, so we'll be able to see the. No? So is there any way we could see them? Should be a way, yeah.
We'd have to set up a Zoom camera.
Because I would, I think that would, yeah, so that's, that's what I wanted to ask, and I think that would be, we should work on that.
We could have a computer there where there'd be.
Yeah, there's, there's body language and everything else that you, you know, you want to make it as interact as possible. So and the protocols would be important, too, in terms of making sure that they're protected. And then I imagine we'll have to have patience because there'll be the, I haven't done the Zoom thing yet, but there may be some pauses and and ways to go slowly and so forth, and.
Yeah, there, yeah, definitely ensure that the process is handled.
Now, and one other thing, then, I know that we get a lot of written submissions, so will, council will be able to get those in maybe in one package? I don't know if we always get them, they kind of come in pieces, right, but maybe they can be summarized at the start of the meeting so we can have that in front of us, too, if we happen to be.
The distribution list generally has them, but I know as they come, they come up, but we could put them together in one package and send them out to everybody prior to. And then also, written submissions can, as long as the public hearing for that item is open, written submissions come up to the point that I, until I close the public hearing.
They could come by email right up to the last minute.
Yes, and so so that's why, and then they would have to be distributed to council, and so in our, I know we discuss this, and we have, we can now do the readings after the public hearing. So one of the questions I have to ask the clerk, have we received any submissions up to this point? And if the answer is yes, then we could determine if we want to adjourn, not not here, or not do third reading until everybody's had a chance. You don't have to read it that that night, but you might not want to vote on it.
Be the same as it always is, that the, you'll close the public hearing, and then a motion will have to be made and pass with no discussion by two thirds before we go into the.
That's right, so, yeah, so the same procedure, and I don't think we'd expect if all of a sudden we've got a couple of submissions during the public hearing, that would be a reason not to consider third reading that night, but to give council an opportunity to read those, but they can be received.
Okay.
At that point, okay.
Well, thanks for that.
Counselor Richter?
Yes, thank you. I was wondering with regards to, like, it seems to me it's the Privacy Act that prevents us from broadcasting the public hearing. But being that this is a very unusual time, can we not just set up Zoom meetings that people could download Zoom and join the meeting and make their delegation from the privacy and comfort of their own homes?
I'll I'll refer that to Mr. Bakken, get his thoughts on that.
The the challenge we have with the, I guess, the public is that the law, unless it changes, and it may change, or the statute requires there to be a forum that they could be heard, at this point, it doesn't appear they've recognized that the public could be heard electronically. Council can be heard electronically, but not necessarily the public. Now, that may change in rulings that occur that could allow for that to to happen. I think at this point, we simply have to be flexible in terms of the process so we can actually continue to evolve to meet the changing circumstances.
Well, is is, would it be advisable, then, for us to maybe send a letter to the province to ask for clarification on this? Because, I mean, they're quite adamant that we have to continue with the distancing and and or the social, physical distancing. And it seems to me that Zoom is a wonderful tool, and if we could just set Zoom up so anybody can come and talk to us through Zoom, that would be a good thing.
Yeah, the one consideration we'd have to have, no, I think you can do it, is you'd have to be able to mute everybody, because you couldn't have people chiming in, pushing their mic and wanting to talk, so we'd have to be able to mute everybody. But I I I know we're always looking for better clarification for the province, so certainly.
Your worship, the, our legal council is actually pursuing that on the technical basis, not on a, on the specific case, but in terms of these issues, because they're getting questions from many communities. So the question that's been raised is being asked.
Okay, but would it help if we just put a formal question of clarification into the province on this specific item?
I think it's already been done, Mr. Lidstone's been working on on this exact thing, so, but, you know, Mr. Bakken, if you can take that back to Mr. Lidstone, and also, you know, to put it together with our requests from the province.
Yeah, again, the question, I guess, would a formal resolution help? Under these circumstances, probably not, only because they're so unique, they're they're looking for information more quickly and looking for it from a broader range. So if the council can simply indicate who they represent, that's been satisfactory so far.
Is that okay?
So we're not gonna send a letter, but our legal counsel is going to send a letter?
Yeah, so I think from direction from, I think Mr. Bakken's heard you, and I think it's, these are good points that we should inquire, because, like I say, Mr. Lidstone's bringing together a lot of information, different municipalities are asking the same thing, and it'd be nice to get some something back standard. So is that, is that fair, Mr. Bakken?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kunst?
So my questions are actually more about other business, so I can wait until we're done with this topic?
Sure. Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, I just wanted, I know it's been thrown around a bit. One or more council members, I'm talking about the delegation of the hearing to one or more council members. This is electronically or in person, if I may, that's one question.
Well, actually, everybody could be electronically, but I I am intending as, hopefully, to to be here with Mr. Bakken and Ms. Bauer to to manage it, but.
Okay, that's the first question.
We could all be electron, I could do this from my house.
Second question, are other members of council encouraged or allowed to come, or what rate, and what rate words would be if they wish to?
Yeah, that's a good question, if, so the order is that we can hold electronic meetings. The order is not that you have to be prohibited, as long as you are practicing the distancing, if you're if you're sick, you have to stay home. If you have travelled or you're in contact with somebody, you have to isolate. As long as you can meet all of those requirements, members of council can come and be here.
That was important to me, I mean, you could go electronically or come in person, and the third thing is scheduled or unscheduled meeting, I wasn't clear what that meant. They're talking about outside, hearing outside of a regular or outside of a special council meeting. I was just wondering what outside was referring to, regularly scheduled or outside of regularly scheduled, if I may, through the chair?
Okay, is that the order you're reading? Are you reading the order, or which?
I'm reading a advice from somebody today.
Worship, that's something, if you had noticed the color, we may want to discuss in a different form.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
But your worship, to the outstanding question, I think that may have begun in this path, and that is the ability of council to regulate and schedule public hearings. Regardless of electronic participation, it is possible for council to delegate the hearing of public hearings to a member or members of council. So at least one, and I guess no more than nine, could be delegated the task of actually attending and running the public hearings and reporting back to council. We've never done that in the past, we've always had the entire council, but yes, it is true, the Act does allow for delegation, and that's one of the pieces that the province was referring to in their process so far.
Okay, and no, Metro Vancouver does it routinely, because there's 40 directors, and they'll delegate it to, they have smaller groups that go out, and then it's reported back, so there is precedent, yeah.
Point of clarification, what is no more than nine regarding this council?
Yeah, good one. All right, Counselor Long? Let me get you on.
Yeah, further to this idea, if we did a Zoom for delegates, I think it would have to be a different meeting. You don't, they would be in an hour meeting, they'd have a separate meeting perhaps somehow, I don't know, that's what you guys will have to look into. But I was, it brought up a question, if someone wanted to send a video, if they wanted to record a video, five minutes, and send it to us in an email, that's probably allowed now. Probably, that's probably something that hasn't happened in the past, but certainly that's something that's possible. They can just do a five-minute thing, call us all kinds of, you know, talk to us and email it to us. So that's another option, is it not?
Ms. Bauer, we do receive written submissions, and so electronic submission, a video, is that, is that even, is it, is there an issue on that in the legislation? Okay.
But but this is to add to the list of. Well, we were going to have legal counsel ask a few questions, so I was just wanted to add that.
Maybe add that one to it.
To the list, yeah.
And again, if we did receive a video, I think council members can use their, you do weigh your submissions, and you might want to use your discretion, it's not that. It may, it may not be an official submission, but it's a submission nevertheless that we could look at, just like somebody emails us, you know, I think we can, you know, without having a rule. I don't know, because you weigh your submissions basically on, and that'd be one, I think, taking a look at it if it's, but if it may not become part of the public record, that's the only thing. Is that correct, Ms. Bauer?
At this point, I would have no way to make it a part of the record.
That's right, so it'd be an information piece, but not part of the public record, I think, we'd have to consider it differently. Okay, so that's kind of all the questions I have on council on that, so I think still more clarification, but we are working our way through it. So the next item is E2, and that's burning permits, Mr. Bakken?
Worship, just an update, burning burning permit season's approaching, and as you may recall, that is often a season that council gets many communications. A couple of challenges this year, or special challenges this year, and that is that with the present closures, it's gonna be very difficult to actually, I guess, collect funds for permits, it could be very easily done electronically, so that's one issue. The second issue is Metro Vancouver, and in fact, the ministry are looking at the, I guess, appropriateness of having burning these this season because of some of the implications it can have on the air quality. As of yet, no decision's been made, and as we understand it, though, a decision will be made likely prior to April the 15th. So our information is we're continuing to watch this and really don't have a position at this point, because there are significant demands from some of the agricultural industry to actually engage in burning, but we're also very sensitive to the airshed in terms of what that could look like. And there's actually some very challenging practical implications in terms of allowing burning without a permit process, so we want to make sure that the permit conditions are imposed. But there's also some challenges in terms of trying to collect fees for that, so we don't have a position yet. We're probably tending more to, willing to regulate if we can get some direction from other levels of government, but at this point, it remains somewhat up in the air.
Thank you, there, there is a, in our distribution, an item from the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change Strategy. So that is basically an advisory, but it's not an order, is that, is that correct? Okay, thank you, Counselor Richter, you have a question? Oh, let me get, there you go.
Yes, I actually wanted to speak to this because it says open burning restrictions issued for all high smoke sensitivity zones in British Columbia. So, I mean, the title alone says that they've restricted it. My question is, is Langley in a high smoke sensitivity zone?
Okay, so Mr. Bakken, I see Chief Gamble there, and fire and smoke is his specialty.
Your worship, the chief just handed me a note, this is, just indicates how it's evolving. It says, "In Metro Vancouver, in collaboration with the BC Ministry of Environment and Climate Change Strategy and BC Ministry of Health, is restricting open burning in all areas of Metro Vancouver effective immediately through Wednesday, April the 30th. Under these restrictions, no new burning of vegetable debris may be initiated in Metro Vancouver and no additional material added to existing fires." So that's, looks like it's in effect now, and as to the question of us being in the open, the zone, the way it falls, I guess the best way to describe it is the western part would be within, the eastern part is likely without. However, that is superseded by this, which is effectively saying no burning until April the 15th, and I'm sure they'll reconsider it at that time.
Okay, well, if that's the case, and no burning, then how are we gonna make this clear to the public? Because I'm pretty sure they're just gonna go ahead and burn anyway, they're cleaning their yards now, they've got, I think that's a good activity for them to do while they're at home, but they're gonna want to burn, and how do we make sure the burning doesn't occur?
So I think through our usual communication channels, through the EOC, they're updating the website all the time, we'll push that out as much as we can once we get, you know, something clear in our our website, our advertising, our newspaper page, that sort of thing. But people need to get a burning permit normally, if they don't have one, it's always enforceable. So without a burning, it's just like before, without a burning permit, call the fire department, they come down, pour water on it, give you a $200 fine.
And that was a non-urgent number that we had, that people could call to report backyard burning. Is that number still in effect, or is it gonna go through the EOC?
It's still in effect, yeah, no, the normal process of the Township Linee will will go on, but the EOC, I think, will, because of this order comes because of COVID-19, will disseminate the information through the all of our normal channels, plus the additional channel of the EOC, so.
Yeah, and the other thing this makes clear, and it makes sense to me, not that I'm happy that we're not gonna be able to burn this year, but just because of the respiratory attacks that this virus poses to people, we have to keep the air clean to enable them to breathe better. So I'm wondering if we could make sure that that non-urgent phone in line is clear on our website and any of the township advertising that we do.
Great, I think with the notice of the burning restrictions, that number will advertise with it, definitely, and all of that, is that correct?
Okay, well, I'm just saying, this past weekend, people are burning already, so.
So we'll get on that, thanks. Counselor Long? Let me get you on.
This is a ministerial order, the burning, is it a quasi-ministerial order, is it not?
Is it an order from, is it order under the Emergency Act, or is it an order from the Ministry of Environment? Coming through Metro, okay, okay.
Okay, because it would be different if it was a part of the COVID-19, well, then there would be strict, much higher penalties potentially, right?
Looks like it's coming as a, as a, okay, thanks, Counselor Ferguson?
Well, yeah, I do, I do mention COVID-19 quite a few times. My question, when is our TOL period, the burning period, what time period is that?
It's usually in the spring and fall, so it usually April 1st is one of our dates that we use, but sometimes due to weather conditions, we change it.
No, it's not.
Okay, so it's usually 30 days, is it? 30 days, okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Arnison?
Yes, thank you, worship. I'm thinking that in addition, so Counselor Richter, I think, brought up a good point about public education. One of the things Metro has, I know, is a lot of information about alternatives to burning, because that's something that they work on very proactively and regularly. So maybe we can access some of the detailed information, because I think if people are out and about and wanting to do something that they associate with seasonal cleaning, that it may be helpful for us to give them alternatives while we have cessation in place. Because otherwise, it's gonna just frustrate people, and if there's information, they may be able to do other things with the detritus they otherwise burn. they may be able to do other things with the detritus they otherwise burn.
Point. Perhaps some links to some of that information as a part of it. All right, I think that wraps, oh, councillor Long?
But the memo we have is from the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change and Metro's COVID.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. But Metro has maybe put it through, so, and we'll get some clarification. I think bottom line is, there's not going to be any burning permits issued. Do you have something to say?
What we just read out to you is, ladies, it just came off, it says, "We started here," so what our back and this wrote, wrote about was, the layers, and it's come from Metro.
So there's layers, so Metro's following the ministry, basically.
They're working in the job.
Yeah. But bottom line, sounds like there are not going to be any burning permits, yeah, that's done. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, I believe what I heard in the memo that was just read out by Mr. Bakken was April thirtieth would be no burning until April thirtieth.
I think it said April fifteenth, chief?
Yes, April fifteenth, they're going to look at it, and they may...
Extend it.
For the next, until April fifteenth, it's no burning.
No burning until April fifteenth, and that's the message we have to get out there.
That's right, so want to issue permits, and then it's reviewed on April fifteenth, which in case, it may be extended. So I don't think we'll be issuing any permits for after April fifteenth till we actually hear, is that, would that be fair to say? Yeah, so we'll wait to get direction from the ministry. Okay, thanks. I think that covers that one, all right, thanks. So councillor Kuntz, you had some other business, let me get your mic on.
So probably along with that message, Metro Vancouver had some concerns about people flushing things they shouldn't be, like all these sanitary wipes and, you know. So maybe we could get that message out too, because that's going to be a huge problem if people continue to do that. I have, sorry, yeah, true enough. So also had a concern about the security for our small business. There was a report in Vancouver that, I think the police were telling some of the business owners along some of the main roads there, or like Robson Street and everything, to put a lot of their most valuable merchandise away because of people that are, you know, potentially, you know. So is there any communication we can get, maybe from RCMP, as to, you know, how that's being, how we're covering our small business for that, this problem right now, the ones that are being shuttered?
I think, Mr. Bakken, through our Economic Development Officer and the RCMP Crime Prevention, perhaps we get a message out, send it out to all of our businesses, removing their, you know, valuables, and it's basically... Residential break-in entries are going to go way down, because everybody's at home. But it's the business ones that are getting, that are going to get hit hard, so I think that information should go out, that's good.
Also, one other thing, what about our, any communication from the people working with our homeless population? And, you know, now that is going to be ramping up in some of the problems that they're facing, not being able to get enough food, shelter, and even communicating with them about COVID-19. Have we been in contact with the supportive housing, you know?
Yeah, so, good point, I've, well, probably a couple of weeks ago, we were already talking to Encompass and Fraser Health about homeless population and options. Fraser Health and B.C. Housing will be probably taking the lead on it, and I've had conversations with Fraser Health regarding that. And I know our staff have had conversations with Stepping Stone and with, not, Stepping Stone and, yeah, Stepping Stone, and then...
Gateway?
Gateway, and also the, what's the place?
Creekstone?
Creekstone, that's it, thank you, to me stones. So, yeah, we're, the staff have been working on that, and I know Fraser Health is very well aware of it, and they're looking at different options. B.C. Housing is looking at options, I know they've been in contact with our staff, looking at, you know, what type of inventory of facilities and buildings and businesses might be able to be co-opted to help. So, yeah, it's front and center of our homeless population. So on one hand, if they're out there and isolated, that's what we want people to do, but the other hand, we want to make sure that they're aware of what's going on and have all the resources. So, yeah, they're working on that, it's something that's been top of mind, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Richter?
I have three things, the first is a question through you to councillor Kuntz, and that is, when's the best time to go see those tulips?
Yeah, I got you on.
Yeah, okay, so my tulips are probably about this big, so I would say they're probably about two or three weeks away.
Okay.
It's hard to know, but I know I've been visiting the arboretum a few times, and the way the staff have sort of designed the garden, it's really going to be beautiful. So we're really looking forward to, even though we won't have a formal ceremony, to be able to take some pictures and just get that message out there. Because there was a lot of people in the last couple of years that have been working really, really hard on Liberation Seventy-Five, and a lot of things have been planned and cancelled. So hopefully, we can just continue to at least acknowledge, you know, that work and that event, so, thank you.
Great. My second item, I sent around an email last night, I think to everybody on council, what City of White Rock is doing with regards to having a list of open businesses for food pickup, pharmacy. Is it possible for us to do that here in the township, or is it just too many businesses?
I brought that up with Mr. Bakken, our EOC commander, and last he told me they're looking into it. Perhaps you have something to add, Mr. Bakken?
Well, that's correct, your worship, thank you for the communication. We started the process to look into it and see what available staff we had, and we're looking to go there to pull a very small staff team to try to do the recording and publication of that. So we, I don't, I can't say definitively it's feasible, but we're certainly working towards trying to accomplish that.
That's great, because it's such a wonderful resource. My final question is, just a question through you to Mr. Bakken, Mr. Mayor, is what are the implications for our bylaws people from the health order that came out yesterday?
Mr. Bakken?
Thank you, worship. To preface my comments, they are still a bit of a work in progress. Effectively, what the order means is the bylaws officers are empowered to start enforcing the regulations and acts of other jurisdictions, in this case, Fraser Health. In those cases, where it's not a detriment to the municipality. And we're looking at both the definition of what would be to the detriment of the municipality, and also the costs associated with it. It's our intention to work collaboratively with those other organizations, but we're still working through some of the mechanics of that, and effectively, it means that they will have more work to do, but we must make sure it's in a safe and appropriate fashion, and that we've adhered to all legal requirements, which is just taking a few days to work through.
And I could add, the, because we're under provincial states of emergency, and our EOC has been activated, we have a number, and the indication from the ministry was that we could submit to recover costs that are over and above what our normal municipal cost would be for redeploying bylaw officers. The question was asked by one of the mayors during the conference call, and it was, yes, put that through. So some of these employees might have to hire, and we've been led, but led to believe that will be covered, but I think Mr. Bakken needs to do his due diligence and ensure that we are covered for some of those costs. But it is a recoverable cost, because it's an order from the, there's a direct order from the emergency program.
Well, that's good news. But my question is, we don't have a large bylaws staff contingent as it stands right now. The normal bylaw regulatory work that they do, is that going to now fall down to last place on their agendas?
I think they'll, they'll be prioritizing, and certainly, I know a lot of our residents are undergoing, you know, a lot of difficulty, people are at home, and so I think there's, certainly our bylaw officers have the discretion based on this current crisis, and we'll be prioritizing our work. So, you know, Mr. Bakken, do you have any further to add to that?
That's correct, your worship, that's where the reference was made, as to not to the detriment of the municipality. There clearly is a priority need in terms of some of the public health issues that have to be addressed, but we also have to maintain the balance as well. And we are also looking to see if we can hire additional officers, but also being mindful of our collective agreement obligations, as we have other areas that are relatively slow. So it's just not easy to create a bylaw officer immediately, so we're looking at all options at this point.
You've got nine of them right here, you could just jeopardize this all.
So people, residents can still call, call into bylaws if they've got concerns about things?
That's right, that's right, definitely, that still is there. Again, you know, we're, we'll see how that all goes because of the workload, but, yeah, definitely.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Ferguson?
Not more than nine. If I may, I just want to respond a couple, I've got the notice of motion on table, I want to talk about, but if I can. I, I want to respond to, councillor Kuntz had mentioned about the unflushable. We actually, at the Metro Vancouver Liquid Waste Table, which is the committee, we actually have a program that we're going to be flushing out soon. But I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, you might know, if we're going, if the committees are going to meet electronically, or we're just going to wait?
At this point, the clerk has canceled all the committees, and...
Yeah, I've seen all those cancellations.
And, you know, again, it's, I think, a matter of capacity of our staff and moving forward based on the current crisis. So I think that's going to be discussed at a later meeting.
A big pardon?
No, our own advisory committees and what...
Advisory committees, Metro advisory.
Oh, Metro advisory, sorry, Metro.
Metro Vancouver Advisory Committees.
That's up to the chair, I've seen a few have been canceled. So it depends, they're managing their workload through this crisis too, so I don't know. That's up, I guess, up to staff recommending to the chair, and then, you know, I've seen a couple get canceled already, so.
I know that we've got, on the Liquid Waste, Metro Vancouver Liquid Waste Committee, we have a number of very large projects going.
That'll be up to them.
And including the unflushable campaign, and also working with the solid waste people on ideas as well. That's the first thing, and there was another point. I want to say, my notice of motion, I did talk about it last meeting, and then I put it on the table. I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, if you want to accept it today or not, it's very straightforward. And I did, I did actually talk about it last meeting, is that the actual Terry Fox, picture of Terry Fox, be nominated as a person to the $5 bill, that's what it was, whether you'd accept that or not?
Yeah, it's, it's not a significant one.
So if so, I'd still move, if I may, I'd still move.
Is there a secondary, councillor Anderson, discussion on the $5 bill? Councillor Long? Let me get you on there.
It's a great idea, but I'm confused, because councillor Ferguson has given us a paper that says that we're going to send a letter of support to the council, or the city of Portquillam, but I don't see any motion that the city's made. And I thought that's what, that's what we'd asked for last time, is a copy of the letter from the city. And I've been Googling it and trying to find something that we can support, but it's not there yet.
So that's a good point.
We'll be a little bit out of line, but it's a great idea.
We've always defer until we get that, that's always an option. Councillor Woodard, then councillor Kuntz, and we'll maybe look at a motion. Oh, let me get you on, just take a minute.
I was going to head down the, sort of a similar path there to, certainly love Terry Fox, don't have any problem with Terry Fox, don't have any problem with Terry Fox and the $5 bill, but by supporting this, I have no idea who I'm voting against to be an alternative to Terry Fox. So, I mean, it would be great to refer this back, Mr. Mayor, potentially, not doing that right now, but to get a list of who's being considered by the federal government, or whatever entity is taking that on, and determine who I'm voting against by voting for this motion, thanks.
Thank you, and councillor Kuntz, did you?
Actually, no, I'm good, I just noticed that the nominations have been closed, but that doesn't mean we can't still vote for them, I'm just looking at the website here, thank you.
Okay, so perhaps councillor Ferguson, if you wanted to just move this be deferred to the next meeting, where you can provide some background information. Okay, so you move the deferral, secondary to the deferral? Councillor Davis, all those in favor, all those carried, thank you. Thank you for that, that was good. Any other business? Councillor Anderson, yeah, councillor Anderson, thank you. Let me get your mic on.
Yes, thank you, worship. This is just further to the tulip situation, and so maybe for consideration, through your worship, to councillor Kuntz, I have been thinking about this, and there was so much effort put towards this for the last couple of years. I'm wondering if there couldn't be something that could be put together between the organizers and the township, so that we could have a virtual event rather than an actual physical event. So somebody monitoring, such as yourself, the tulips blooming, and then go out there with staff and maybe do a bit of a little video that can be put out to people, that would be a community, but particularly people who have been involved in that process. So just having sort of the cheerful orange tulips all coming up might be very encouraging.
I think we can do that, there is, it is a township event, so I know we're going to be going out there on the day and taking a few pictures, so we can do a little bit of a video and, you know.
I know that the Kingdom of the Netherlands have plans to actually, and I don't know if they can actually fly a drone in that area, but they would actually like to take some video of the different places where they're blooming, so hopefully, you know, we were allowed to do that, but, yeah, thanks for, you know, bringing that up.
Councillor Long?
Well, I was thinking about that when we first heard about the tulips. Couldn't we put a cam up on the building and have it take a picture every day or something? Because that would be phenomenal to see them go from this point up, right?
Okay, councillor Long?
So who's going to do, that's your job. No, I can't climb a ladder, I'm not very good at that. And I don't have the technology, maybe somebody else has the technology.
We can take that under advisement, I think with the capacity that we have with this crisis, we may be limited, but maybe councillor Kuntz can run out and take some pictures, and we can put it all together every day, that'd be fantastic, yeah. I know you love it, you love that project. Councillor Woodard?
I just have another item before, seems like we've spent more time talking about tulips and COVID itself.
That's important. Go ahead, councillor Woodard, other business?
Yeah, just in regards to following up, in regards to the bylaw enforcement, possibilities now that they have been given or delegated that authority, I have a couple of questions back to staff about that. Whether if we start to see some businesses and individuals in certain areas repeatedly not obeying the provincial directives, can we follow up on that as a bylaw complaint, similar to any other bylaw complaint the member of council can follow up on?
Definitely, definitely, that's...
And do we have the resources to start to follow up on that, if that's the expectation from the provincial government?
Maybe I could just say something, I know with the order from the provincial government, if there's someone flagrantly going against the orders and the recommendations of the, of the health officer, they, the RCMP do have an authority, I think their peace officers, our bylaw officers have not been given some authority, we're just trying to clarify exactly what that is. But it is important that everyone adhere, and if they're not, then certainly, I think, it needs to be brought to attention, and either by members of council or by members of the public.
I usually have the opinion that maybe police have better things to be doing, but depending on where this falls. So last council meeting on Monday, I brought up the example of Sportsplex, which I have not verified, but people email me and say that they're not following the rule of gatherings under fifty, they're not enforcing social distancing. And I asked at the time, does that responsibility fall to the patron or to the business owner? And if some businesses are simply not able to, or don't have the culture to enforce these orders, can we now, in a position to have our bylaw officers, close them?
Mr. Bakken?
So, your worship, it's very close. The bylaw officers, I guess, really in that situation, are seconded to the other authority, which could be the province or the health authority. In those situations, they would actually have authority to write tickets or enforce pursuant to their jurisdiction. So, for example, I think Vancouver recently went through an exercise of raising its fines. The fines we're talking about would be fines of the province or the Fraser Health authorities that go forward. The enforcement mechanism beyond writing the fine would be left to that entity unless they asked it to be delegated to us, for which would be difficult, because it's not our jurisdiction, but the officer is effectively the agent of that entity. Very easy for us to communicate their activities to council, but the enforcement then would likely, well, we would encourage to be done by that entity if it goes further, and that would likely be criminal charges or quasi-criminal charges for contempt.
Okay, so it evolves into the RCMP regardless if they're not following the order potentially?
Yeah, and those orders are pretty clear, and I think it is an important thing for a police officer to be doing if someone is flagrant, not following the orders of the provincial health officer.
Okay, well, I'll just leave it there for now, Mr. Bakken, and maybe you have to get some more time to understand the implications of that delegation and bylaw enforcement, maybe I'll follow up directly with staff, and if it's applicable, but I do continue to get reports even of non-essential businesses continuing to operate. And if we have the resources to stop some of that, perhaps, I would like to see us do that.
But non-essential businesses are not ordered to stop. There is no order for, there is no order yet, so we can't enforce that.
We'd have to wait until more orders come down, because there's a lot of confusion out there. People think that non-essential businesses have been ordered to stop.
They provided a list, yeah, they provided a list on what they consider is essential, but as I understand, there are no orders. So all businesses can operate as long as they, and the health officer, provincial health officer has made it very clear, as long as they're exercising distancing and less than fifty gathering. So at this point, I don't believe there's an order, is that correct, Mr. Bak?
That's correct, your worship, there's a lot of confusion in terms of the recommendations and the orders, and sometimes the orders actually even state that it's a recommendation that, so it's an order recommending, which is very confusing. And Mr. Seffy just actually provided some additional information, that even now Fraser Health is asking that effectively that we are their eyes and looking at any transgressions and report them to Fraser Health. Not that we even actually issue fines or tickets, that we're really just issuing warnings and going to that path. So at this point, that's an evolving circumstance, we'll be doing that certainly, being their eyes and ears and issuing advisories. But then they've asked to go to them to actually to enforce to the next level, which likely would involve referring it to the RCMP.
Okay, so my last, just follow up on that then, would be, you know, what's the example then, Mr. Mayor, the information that we have to write this moment, that if we have a non-essential business that's operating that cannot maintain social distancing requirements?
That would go to the Fraser Health, as I understand it.
That'd be referred to Fraser Health, okay, thanks.
But it's still not an order, as I understand it, orders are enforceable, recommendations aren't. So we certainly, I think if there's a business that was not doing it, they certainly should go to Fraser Health, they should certainly be made aware of it. should go to Fraser Health, they should certainly be made aware of it. And we wanna hear about those businesses. But until it's an order, it cannot be enforced. That's, that's the, you know, where we are then.
Okay, well, I just, I'll look for that wording to be more specific, and I'll pay attention to recommendations versus orders and so on, and continue to try to educate those that contact me. Thanks.
And I'll just ask Chief Gamble, just to keep note of that. So as these orders come out, we're making every attempt to inform members of council, exactly what it means, through the EOC. And, and I think you've seen the last few days, the EOC is now putting out correspondence to the members of council to keep them in the loop on what the changes are, 'cause they, they are changing daily. And I've asked them to, to keep that consistent messaging, so it comes from the EOC. You know, I know last week was a bit of a, we're all looking to find where the light bulb, the light switches were in the dark, 'cause so much was happening so fast, that trying to get the information out was, was challenging. And I, I did what I could, but I've now directed, or not directed, I've asked the, the EOC to manage all of that correspondence, so that when we get it, it's for council, and we give some clear direction. And if you're not getting any clear direction, certainly an email back. Because I think they're attempting to do, to provide as best information, up-to-date as possible, and then also, what's for public dissemination goes onto the website as soon as possible too. So, good points, and Chief Gamble, we'll, we'll take that back to the EOC. Thanks. Counsel Ferguson?
Oh, yeah, I just, you know, we're just our last meeting, and I guess, in, in person for a while, for at least maybe short, sooner than later, I guess. My question, if I may, either to yourself or to the staff, whether you're getting many residents phoning in and just asking, you know, for help, or asking what they can do under the, from a myriad of questions, from a support basis, whether you're getting much of that?
I can say, yeah, from my office, we've had a couple, which have been referred to. I know one is really more of a federal jurisdiction, referred to the MP who did some help, and some have gone to the MLA. Those areas have gotten some help. But we're now directing all of them through the EOC, and so then they are able to point them to the right direction. So there is more coming out, I think, a hotline for those people who don't have access to internet. Our EOC's been working very hard to get, very hard to get a hotline, so you can phone in and go through a tree, and get the same information that's on our website. But as you can tell, that would take, that takes a lot of time, but that should be, either it's out now, or it's just about out. And also, there's a conduit that we, as members of council staff, can send to the EOC, and then they are sending those issues, complaint, or concerns out to the appropriate body. So we are dealing with them as much as we possibly can, and I think everyone's getting an answer. Sometimes it's out of our jurisdiction.
Okay, so the reason, like, that's really technical, EOC, I, and I know what it means. You know, I'm talking about, we're sometimes the, the front line of command, and that, you know, I'm not talking about somebody phoning up and talking to the mayor, I'm talking about somebody who misses, who answers the phone at the front desk, and there's Mrs. Brown, who's seventy-five years of age, is saying, what do I do? You know, how do I get my groceries? What stores are open? And, you know, who can help me? 'Cause I am confused, I'm lost, I'm worried, I'm afraid, those kind of things, that, you know, we're the front line. Sometimes I just might even phone one of our pools, or one of our rec people, if we're instructing, or whether our frontline people have got something that we can tell them.
They do. So it's been very clear from the Emergency Operations Centre. It's been, you've all received a memo a couple of days ago, that there is an email address that council can refer, can send these to. It's, it's not for the public at this point. The public can, are encouraged to use the regular channels. All of those go through the EOC. They're all being looked after, staff are, are there for that. All of the staff who are answering the phones know where to send the queries to, and have been doing that. So it really is an effort to ensure that the information comes from one source, and that they're dealing with it. They're also establishing a frequently asked question, FAQ, for people, and all we need to, you know, we're really encouraged to direct inquiries from, from the public to tol.ca, and to the coronavirus updates. And they're updating that daily, and there's also, they're working on FAQ, so questions can be answered. And if those can't be answered, then it goes the next step, and it's dealt with on an individual basis. And there are some that are very unique individual concerns, and they've been dealt with, so.
Well, I know, I just wanna do some advertising. I know I'm involved with the senior center, and they can phone our center, and people can get meals, and get information, and we're a conduit to those people that are seniors. You don't have to be a senior, but we're doing the best we can to help those that are asking for help. And I'm sure the Salvation Army and other groups are doing the same thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks a lot. Okay, is there any other business? I see none. We're gonna move on to F, and that's a motion resolved, a special close for the items on the agenda. Is there any on, on table? No, no on table, so. Motion, Counsel Arneson, second by Counsel Davis, I think, all those in favor? All those carried. Now a motion to terminate the afternoon regular meeting, or afternoon special meeting. Counsel Davis moves termination. Counsel Arneson seconds it. All those in favor? All those carried. Thank you. We'll now go to our closed meeting. Thank you.